Thank you for being so patient. Technically, we can't start until 7:00 PM, so we are patiently waiting.[18.02][18.02](Laughter) We'll call our meeting to order. Thank you for joining us and Happy New Year. We've not had a chance to convene, so we are very excited you're all here to join us 2015. You'll notice that Jennifer Schwab is filling in for Dana Kendall, our Executive Secretary. She had a close family member pass away, so she's unable to be with us this evening, so we send her our best. And with that, Madam Secretary, please take role.
All five Board members are here, not necessarily all sworn in, so I'm not sure exactly how I'm supposed to say that, but all seats are taken here.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. And next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please rise. The Honorable Judge Bardock is with us, and she will lead us.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the God of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have the Oath of Office. And with that, I'll call down Mr. Kirschner, Mrs. Nalls, and myself to the podium to meet with Judge Bardock.
We appreciate the judge being with us tonight. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Formality is important, and we thank you with your presence.
Aye.
Aye, Mike Kirschner.
So I only swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
So I only swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the laws of the United States and the State of Indiana.
And the laws of the United States and the State of Indiana.
I will faithfully execute the duties of my office.
I will faithfully execute the duties of my office.
As a member of the Carmel Clay School Board.
As a member of the Carmel Clay School Board.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[180.06][180.06](Applause) And welcome to the Board, Mr. Kirschner. And next, we have a special presentation, and Dr. Wall will be leading us.
Thank you, Leila. I don't know if many people know this, but this is School Board Recognition Week in the United States. So it's appropriate that we reseat the Board and new members and have the Board Reorganization Meeting on that week. I'd like to suggest to the Board that we proclaim that School Board Recognition Week is observed by more than the 14,000 school districts in the United States, or 354 in the State of Indiana. And whereas the men and women serving as members of school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education as they continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education. And whereas the members of Carmel Clay School Board of Trustees respond to the educational needs of the communities they serve, and in doing so, these leaders help strengthen our state's educational system and improve our future prospects for children. And whereas during the second week of January 2015, special recognition is held in observance of School Board Recognition Week. And it is fitting to join in acknowledging the commitment and contributions of our local school board. Therefore, I, Dr. Nicholas D. Wall, Superintendent of Carmel Clay Schools, do hereby proclaim January 11th through January 17th, 2015, as School Board Recognition Week at Carmel Clay Schools. And I'd like to give the Board a round of applause if you've joined me.[311.12][311.12](Applause). And I'd like to invite the Board, if they could, down just in front of your sign, in front of your chair. We have special recognition tonight representing all 15 schools in Carmel Clay Schools. What I'd like to do is recognize the students that are here tonight representing their respective building. And students, if you would stand by your place and just stay there. And then after, we're introducing all the students, so they can be introduced. And parents, thank you for being here this evening. If you'd like to take a photo as they're doing that. Or at the end, we're going to have a photo with the Board of all the students. So we will take that pregnant pause in the meeting to do that. But I want to recognize these students in the building they represent. So students, as I say your name, just stand in front of your chair, and I thank you for being here this evening. I thank principals as well. So we're going to start at Carmel Elementary. Ella Schwartz, would you stand, please? We're going to Cherry Tree. Grace Slappin. College Wood. Ryan Harris. Forest Dale. Jonathan Stroh. Mohawk Trails. Bella Gray. Orchard Park. Sarah Mowbray. Prairie Trace. Lily Kraus. Smokey Rowe. Madison Wilson. Tal Meadow. Ava Nguyen. Wes Clay. Doc Osborne. And we have double the fun and pleasure at Woodbrook. Kate and Lauren Tallens, twins. Thank you for being here this evening. Then we're going to go to Creekside Middle School. Elena Yu. And we go to Clay. James Bullos. Carmel Middle. Hannah Peterson. And last but far from least, from Carmel High School, Bobby Greaser. Bobby, let's welcome these students. Thank you for being here this evening.[452.81][452.81](Applause). In this recognition and School Board Recognition Week in Carmel Clay Schools, Board Members, you will be awarded carnations representing each of our schools for your special place in your home, wherever, at workplace, wherever it may be. A proclamation for you that I read that you can put in a special place at home or work as well. So, and Jennifer, if you would, you'll hand the students, the carnation students, you'll take them to the Board Members. At the end, you'll have quite a bouquet. You can go right over there.[496.62][496.62](Audio loss).
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, now we're going to get a photo.
So Jennifer, you going to line them up?
I am.
Okay.
All right.
Why don't you come on in and let's just fill up.
Either side or corner.
They're going to get their face.
You think they went through some typical?
Yeah.
Come on in.
There you go.
There you go.
Come on in.
There you go.
Everybody.
All right.
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 Next on the agenda, we have the election of officers. And we have, per statute, we need to reorganize every January. And we will need to reorganize with a president, a vice president, and a secretary. And with that, I need nominations from the floor to fulfill these roles. Mrs. Nels?
Yes, I would like to nominate Leila Spandenberg for president, Kathy Fried for vice president, and Pam Nels for secretary.
Thank you, Mrs. Nels. May I get a second?
I'll second then.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving right along, we have appointments. And our first appointment is a pretty long statement there. Appointment of treasurer, deputy treasurer, approval of bonds for treasurer, deputy treasurer, and extracurricular treasurers. Dr. Wall?
As Leila stated, this is an annual process of reorganization. I'm recommending to the board that we continue to keep Roger McMichael, associate superintendent for Business Affairs as treasurer, and David Stowers as deputy treasurer for Carmel Clay Schools.
Do you want us to take it in parts?
Well, you can, or you can take it in its entirety. Oh, okay. Excuse me. Further, recommending to the board, approve continuation of bonds for the treasurer, deputy treasurer, in the amount of $100,000 each. Continue to recommend to the board approve a position-schedule bond for extracurricular treasurer in the amount of $50,000 for the high school, $20,000 for the middle school, and $10,000 for the elementaries and ESC. So yes, in entirety. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that recommendation. May I have a motion?
I move that we appoint Roger McMichael as treasurer and David Stowers as deputy treasurer. And also, they recommend that they approve of the continuing bonds for the treasurer and deputy treasurer in the previously stated amounts.
Thank you. May I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointment of general counsel. Dr. Wall?
Thank you. Each year, it's recommended to the board that we appoint a general counsel. Do this honor before July 15th. We're recommending that the board continue to have Mr. David Day as general counsel for Carmel Clay Schools.
Thank you very much. May I get a motion?
I move to continue with David Day as our general counsel.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Appointment of our executive secretary?
Annually, we review and recommend to the board the executive secretary, honor before January 15th, to perform secretarial duties as required by the school board of trustees. We continue to recommend Mrs. Dana Kendall as executive secretary.
Thank you very much. May I get a motion?
I move that we approve Dana Kendall as our executive secretary.
Second?
And I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have our cable television representative.
We found out last year that annually, the board can appoint someone to represent them on the cable television board, and we're recommending that Kristi Cloud remain in that position for Carmel Clay Schools.
May I get a motion to approve Kristi Cloud? Thank you, Mrs. Nels.
I move that Kristi Cloud be the cable television representative for the school board.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on our agenda, we have the Indiana School Board Association delegate and the Indiana School Board Association legislative liaison. May I get a rec-- well, it is recommended that Mrs. Hackett fulfill that role for us on the board. May I get a motion?
I would like to nominate and that we approve and recommend that Mrs. Tricia Hackett be our representation to the legislature, Indiana Legislature.
And delegate.
And delegate.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Yes.
I could just make a comment. I want to thank Pam, served in this role last year, the last couple of years, and I just want to thank her, especially for her work this past year in resurrecting the school board legislative priorities and using a very inclusive process to vet that and get that through. And I'd be honored to serve in the position and look forward to kind of a transition time as the legislative session has already begun.
That sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next, we have appointment of our Carmel Clay Parks Board representative. And it is recommended that Ms. Kathy Fried continue to serve as our Carmel Clay Parks representative. May I get a motion?
I'll move that the board appoint Kathy Fried as our Carmel Clay Parks Board representative.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Next, a related item. We do need to take action. Each year, the board, when we reorganize, has to establish salaries for board members. And by statute, that salary is $2,000. And it's recommended that the school board salaries remain the same. Per statute is $2,000. We need to get a recommendation from the board, or a motion from the board, that is. Mrs. Fried?
This is always hard for me, but I will move that we approve a salary of $2,000 for each board member. Certainly do appreciate serving the community. And I do look at it as an opportunity to learn and also serve, and I enjoy working with all the people in Carmel Clay Schools. So I'm very happy to suggest that salary.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have consent. May I get a motion on the table to approve consent?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have action. And as our first point of action, I'm going to request a motion to suspend the Board of Trustees meeting for the purpose of convening a Carmel Clay School Board Board of Finance meeting. May I get a motion?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Mr. McMichael, we will now convene the Board of Finance meeting.
Okay. You have three orders of business. The first is to elect a president and a secretary. The second will be to review the report of investments which are included in your board report. And the third action item is to, or third item is to approve the public depositories. And this is something that is required under statute each year to be done before the last day in January.
Okay. So the first action of the Board of Finance is to appoint a president and a secretary. The administration is recommending that the president and secretary of the school board also serve as a president and secretary of finance. May I have a motion?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Mr. McMichael, will you like to present the investment report?
Yes. You can see, our investments these days are very minimal. We did earn $70,743.15 in our checking accounts at Huntington National Bank. And that really is the report on investments.
Okay. So then, the final action of the Board of Finance is to approve the public depositories. Mr. McMichael has provided a list of all qualified public depositories. May I have a motion to accept these depositories?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Seeing that there's no other business for the-- since there's no other business for the Board of Finance, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we'll reconvene the meeting of the Carmel Clay School Board of Trustees. Jennifer, do you have those times?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Excellent. Next, we're moving on to establishment of a common wage committee. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. Under Indiana law, when a school district plans to do a construction project that will exceed $350,000, it's necessary for the board to establish a common wage schedule and a common wage committee. And so, we have two projects that we're anticipating. One is interior finishes at Carmel High School, and the other is a re-roof project at Mohawk Trails Elementary School. So those will be the projects. And we're recommending that the board consider naming myself as representative of industry and Ron Farren as a representative for the taxpayer who resides in the county. There's an additional appointment that is made by the county commissioners, and we will ask them to make that appointment.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Yes.
I just wanted to know, you're aware that they are looking at changing this law in this next session, right?
I've heard that they're talking about it, yes.
Okay. So are you, what do you think about the changes that they're proposing, or?
I'm sorry?
What do you think about the changes?
Well, I'm not sure I know all the change, the exact nature of the changes that they have, they established in the first place to, with the intent that we would pay what's called a common wage. And so, this committee reviews information from the Association of Building Contractors, which is non-union, as well as information from the local unions. And so, and it's really the school board then that is kind of the tiebreaker when there's a vote. So I had heard that they were going to make some changes, but I don't really know what the specifics are.
They're looking to disband the committee and to make it just--
Just establish the wage.
It be just free, whatever the market is doing at the time.
Yeah. That's what they talked about when they established this, when they went, until this was established, essentially, what was adopted was the union wage. And so, this became kind of the middle ground between that and now just having it open.
Okay.
And--
I just wondered.
Yeah.
Just thought I'd bring that up. Okay. Sorry. No? Thank you for bringing it up. Any other questions or point of discussion? Okay. Then, all in favor of establishing our common wage for the period of January 27 through April 26 of 2015 for the two projects, Carmel High School and Mohawk, as well as recommending that Mr. McMichael is a representative of industry and Mr. McFarren is a representative for the taxpayers. Actually, Ron Farren, not McFarren. I said--
What was my question?
Yes. As well as allow the administration to seek appointment of the committee as appropriate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Before we adjourn our meeting, we had a couple of our board members who attended a very informative legis-- Pam and Tricia, you can, I'm not exactly sure what it was titled, but the, what you attended last Thursday, which was pretty impressive, the comprehensive review that you've given to the board.
You want to go first? No.
Actually, Pam had sent out a report to the board to review with the board, and there was actually just a couple little things that I could add, but it was very comprehensive. So I say, go for it.
Thank you. We went to a meeting downtown at the Central Library that was put on by WFYI and Chalk Beat Magazine. And Tricia made me aware of this, asked if anybody wanted to go, and I thought it would be very interesting to attend. And it was called Funding Schools in Indiana: Fairness, Equity, and the Needs of Children. Attending were Representative Brian Bosma, who is the House Speaker, Representative Tim Brown, who is the Chair of Ways and Means, and Louis Farabee, Dr. Louis Farabee, who is the superintendent of public instruction, superintendent of schools, of IPS, and Mr. Hemsell, who is the superintendent of Northwest Allen County Schools. It was a very interesting conversation. They began the conversation with two handouts. One, talking about the tuition support distribution to schools with ADM, and the other was tuition support plus Title I money, which is a new way that they're talking about looking at school funding in the state of Indiana. They showed the highest district receiving the most money at $8,666 was East Chicago. They have a student total of 4,359 students. The lowest funded school on their report was Carmel, at $5,463 for our 15,328 students. Representative Bosma mentioned this several times in his conversations, talked about the difference being around $3,200 for Carmel, what they received and what the top received, and as much as $4,000 if you include the Title I money. It was very interesting to hear from all of these individuals. They are definitely talking about adding money to the state funding formula. They want to increase, they're talking about increasing the foundation amount, which would be increased for all school systems. They did not say what they were going to increase it to. I saw Bosma is talking about an increase of at least 2 percent. He would like to see 2 percent each year of the biennium. I know in the paper, Pence was talking about a 2 percent and a 1 percent. So I think this is going to be an interesting conversation coming up downtown as to what they're going to do with the state funding formula. They do understand that there's discrepancies in the formula. And it was interesting to talk to Dr. Farabee and listen to his perspective on the money that's being given to IPS. It was brought up that IPS was 100,000 students, and it is now down to 30,000 students. And they have 20,000 students attending charter schools at this time. There is a bill that came through the legislator, legislature, and it was 13, no, I can't find it. Oh, 1321, which Dr. Farabee brought up because it allows public schools to partner with charter schools. And he was very pleased with this because this allows his school system to partner with charter schools to provide transportation to students and the challenges in the use of facilities downtown and trying to pull more of the charter school students back into the IPS system. There was talk about school consolidation as a possible, as a possibility to help with the school funding formula because they've got many, many, very small corporations out in rural areas. And they think that because of the smallness of the corporations, they can't allow, they can't offer the courses and opportunities that the larger school systems offer their students. So that was, that was an interesting discussion as well. Possible increase in the special ed money and the E&amp;L money. And, oh, also looking at, Farabee would like the state to be looking at a student growth model instead of using proficiencies like they do with iStep. And I know the iStep information was just reported. So I haven't really looked at that very much, but, so that's my report.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Pam. It was a really enlightening evening. And you can access this through wfyi.org, I believe it is, and hear this discussion, this panel discussion. Just a couple of things that I'd just like to add in that Pam talked about, that Representative Bosma spoke about that the difference between an IPS or East Chicago funding and a Carmel funding is 3,200, like she said. And he emphasized, that's a per student. So you multiply that out. So it's not just that little bitty amount that's different. You multiply that per student, and that's what we're working with. An interesting point on funding I thought was brought up that doesn't really affect us, but I thought it was a point of clarity in that the foundation formula gives a base of 4,587 that we start out, and then we use the complexity index to figure out how much per student. And the maximum voucher amount was right in that ballpark at 4,800, which I thought helped put it in perspective of maybe how the legislators look at that. Representative Bosma emphasized, as Pam said, three different areas of education funding, it kind of falls into three different areas. And one was the foundation funding, which is that base one. One is adding that complexity, which Pam talked about too. And the third is giving money or allocating money for those school districts that are schools that significantly improve or are high performing. And that was a performance--
Great.
--grant, yes. Thank you. And that that is an area that they're looking at again. That did affect us, since we are a high performing district and have many high performing schools. So that is something that to keep your eye on. An interesting point that I think helped bring it down to the child level because we are here for the children. Dr. Farabee, representing a more low poverty district, made the point that not every poverty child is the same. So when you look at complexity, he looks, he says he needs to look at every child and every child's need. You don't just fall into a category. And Chris Hemsell of, that was the school superintendent that represented the more high performing, less poverty, also noted that not every suburban child is the same. So I think that was a good way to hold the conversation back into, we're talking about real kids here. And I'll just end it on that. Thanks.
I've got a question. Did they mention at all, you know, they had the foundational money, then the voucher amount, did they mention at all when they were discussing vouchers, their interest in increasing the number of vouchers, or?
Please-- Yes. They're talking about possibly taking the cap off of the voucher amount that is going to the students. And we both noted that if the cap is pulled, then voucher students would be getting more than Carmel students are getting to attend the Carmel schools. Also, the voucher money, Representative Bosma brought it up several times because he wanted people to understand that, yes, they have a cap of 4,800 at this point, but the amount a voucher student gets cannot be 90, any more than 90% of the per pupil funding in the area in which they live. So if they live in Carmel, the amount that they get to go to a different school cannot be more than 90% of what we get per pupil. So I thought that was interesting.
Is that new, or is that--
No, that's--
That's how it works.
Yeah. That's how it works. But if they remove the cap, that may not be how it works.
And just for clarity, in the governor's proposed budget, he's suggesting 100,000 more vouchers, which would equate to, of the 2%, that'd be $1,500 more per voucher, which would then leave about $80 to $100 per student for public schools. And that was clarified at our legislative breakfast last Friday.
You know, and to add in with that, the opinion that I got from the panel, let's see if Pam agrees here, if you take the whole amount of money that goes to kids who are in public schools and the amount of money that goes to kids in voucher, in the voucher program, the legislators consider that a drop in the bucket. So when they're talking about increased funding, they see it as not affecting us, and they keep it separate. We tend to see it as tax dollars go to the state, and every child deserves an education, and if whatever you funnel out is not an opportunity for one of our kids to get. So there was a different philosophy, I think, happening on how it was even approached.
Okay.
Yeah. I was at the breakfast with Dr. Wall, and that's the one thing I, they put the number out there that we're going to give 20 million or whatever amount--
It's 40.
$40 million to education in surplus this year. And the general public thinks, wow, that's a lot of money to education. But they don't realize that that's a total number, and that when they do start pulling it into these different quantities, it's not really going to public schools. There's a whole bunch of it going to charters and private and the vouchers. So even though it is all for the kids, it's not being distributed equitably, and I don't think a lot of people are aware of that.
Well, it, when I said 40, it wasn't, that's not the amount, the budget is going to be increased. That is the amount of increase for just charter schools.
Yeah.
$40 million. If they, if they raise it--
I believe at the breakfast--
--to 1,500 per student.
I think that he was proposing at this point, like a 1.75% the first year, and then maybe only like 0.85%. Did I hear that number on Friday morning? The amount of increase to education is not a lot, again. It sounds like a lot when you give the dollar amount.
Yeah. It was proposed two the first year, one the second in the biennium, what they were proposing.
And after they pulled out the-- Amount, it came down to about a 0.85, or Roger probably knows how that all works. But it's never what they say.
Well, if you pull out 1,500 increase per voucher, because their justification--
Charter.
Charter, excuse me. Yeah. Thank you. For charter, thank you. It leaves about $80 to $100 for public school, but, and their rationale was that the charter, they don't get capital project funds. What's left out there is the reality is if you start a charter, you pay a dollar for the facility. So they don't have capital project needs like we do. So there's a lot of, I think, misrepresentation on specific needs here.
Yeah. Actually, there was a group there that gave us a separate handout when we walked in on just that, just that situation, and they were from a charter school. And so, we went back and asked them to clarify because they were saying plus tax dollars and things like that, and we're saying, but there are no, and they were saying their charter school doesn't get tax dollars. And we're saying, well, what would those go for anyway? And they were non-general fund items. And so, afterwards, he found us and said, you know what? I checked into this, and we'll try to clarify that in our next handout. So where that goes, I don't know, but we made our mark there.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Good job.
Thank you very much. That was very comprehensive. And so glad that you brought that information back to us as we move forward. There's a-- Dr. Wall, do you want to speak to what we're doing on the 21st?
I'd love to. To continue that in the spirit of informing and education, Carmel Clay Schools, Board of Education Administration, along with Carmel Clay Education Association, President Brian Lyte in the audience, and the Carmel Education Foundation are jointly showing rise above the mark January 21st, 6:15 PM Carmel High School Auditorium. And the evening is designed to educate and inform, and it's open to the public, open to all. We've sent this not only to all of our families in Carmel Clay Schools and Carmel Clay families with, with students in class, empty nesters, everybody that we've got on our list. We've sent it out to all Hamilton County school corporations in the surrounding area, as well as even some coterminus with Hamilton County, to invite any and all the community to this discussion. Though we representatives, that will be led, a panel discussion will follow, which I think will be an interesting opportunity for people to really look at objectively what has gone on in, in education in the state of Indiana. I think the documentary done by the West Lafayette Education Foundation is done professionally in a manner for people to understand and start to wrap their, their hands and their head around public schools and really think about the need and the value of public schools in the state of Indiana. So look forward to the evening. Very excited for the opportunity to show this with the board and the association and the foundation collectively as we all pull the same way for our children in the public schools.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Wonderful. And with that, our reorganizational meeting of 2015 is adjourned.